Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting to order for Wednesday, April 2nd. We good over there? I think? Okay. At this time, a lot of things going on in the world. Tragedy with the earthquake, many other things. Have a moment of silence and think about whatever you just want to think about. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Rick Dunn in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Crupp, if you please call the roll tonight. Arden.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Reinards.
Present.
Gripp.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Tiedon.
Here.
Jobjen.
Here.
And Burkeholder.
Here.
Ten present, your honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome, everybody, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, just a little reminder, if you please consider putting your phone on silent or turning it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council at a particular time, wait for the chair or myself to call. Please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. When you address the council, please address the council as a body, as one entity, and not to any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Mr. City Administrator Maxheimer, is there anything update tonight?
Just a couple of items, Mayor. Tomorrow, just a reminder, Main Street Landing groundbreaking. It's at 1:00 PM. You have more information on our website about that. I'd also like to let everybody know that we had the Downtown Development Partnership kick off their pilot off-duty foot patrol on March 24th. I want to extend my thanks to them for funding this pilot, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this works for future. See if we could fund that maybe on a programmatic basis. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. We have four public hearings tonight, all under public works, so Alderman Rick Dunn will read. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you. Your honor, open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the junior theater renovation at Davenport Learning Center project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing?
Yeah, Paul Vasquez, 3rd Ward, City of Davenport. As I understand it, this is to move all the activities surrounding the actual acting to the old Davenport, the school administration building, I think it was, but to keep the actual acting and performances at the auditorium. I think that's great, if that's what it is. But to me, this is self-inflicted. I was told that the reason they moved out of there, that they gave away essentially Annie Wittenmeyer, was maintenance was too high. I think that's a mistake. To start looking around for things in the city that cost too much to maintain or cost too much to keep is why, in my opinion, if it's new and improved, a project, money's there to develop, one way or another it gets done, but when the streets, sidewalks, all these other things, well, that's not the money for it. So I think the focus is not to decide what's costing Davenport money, but the same thing happened even with Federoy Park. How many remember the old Federoy Park petting zoo? It wasn't in competition with the hobby. It cost too much. So close it down. And yeah, things evolve, I understand that, but you can't do Davenport as a business and look at anything that arises on a profit-loss basis. I think that's a mistake. I think it costs tradition. I wish you wouldn't do that. And I understand it's going to happen. I'm glad, I'm sincerely glad, that the acting itself stays at the junior theater. I think that was very important, that it had a venue that had character and a little history behind it. Anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Credit Island Causeway Repair Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Dubuque Street, East 29th Street to East 32nd Street Mill and Overlay Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Newbury Street-Lincoln Court to North Pine Street Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next area is petitions and communications, council. Anyone? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, honor. Couple of things, on behalf of the library. First, I wanted to call everyone's attention to the first toddler prom taking place Saturday, April 5th, from 1:00 PM at the Eastern Avenue Library, just 6,000 Eastern Avenue. It's suggested design for toddlers 18 to 4 years and their caregivers. Put on your dancing shoes, fancy this outfit, and join us for our first-ever toddler prom. Walk the red carpet, take a limo ride, get your photo taken, and dance the afternoon away. So if you know anyone with toddlers, if you have a toddler, it's a fun, free event, and I hope folks can take advantage of it. This is one of the example of the great things that our library does, and this is a new thing they're doing. I did want to, we did talk about National Library Week at last week's council meeting and recognize that that is April 6th through 12th. Libraries are becoming more and more challenged with funding across the country for various reasons and decisions, so the library would certainly like you to visit, take time in this next week to rediscover the library, see how it draws together a community, go for books, resources, a place to connect. They have everything that all the events they have are on their website, so if you would take time to do that. And also, the library, the Davenport Public Library, will be hosting a day of giving on Friday, April 11th, and that your gift will help save Davenport, help Davenport Library continue to be safe and welcoming. And if you would like to donate to that, you can go to www.davenportlibrary.com. So please take time either to visit the library and think about supporting them. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Jobjen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make an announcement. The next Thursday, April 10th, 6:30 PM, Duck Creek Park Lodge will be the next 6th ward meeting. It's a little off schedule from what I usually do, but hope to see people then, and I'll probably give another reminder next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Reinards.
Thank you. Just a quick note, there'll be no 8th ward meeting in April, so I'll see y'all in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the... Alderman Kelly, do you have something?
Yeah.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Once again, I want to apologize for my absence. I'm trying to get together, so I will definitely be in attendance real soon, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to the new mayor in Rock Island. I see changes happening in the Quad Cities, so I just wanted to say congratulations to Ashley Harris for his win in Rock Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four items of discussion, which are community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first area is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinards will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, your honor. We have three items on community development this evening. Item number one is a second consideration ordinance for case ROW 25-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to vacate a portion of the alley right-of-way located north of Locust Street between Bell Avenue and Dougalby Street. Please note that Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial of this consideration. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Sean Egan. I reside at 828 Waverly Road, Davenport, Iowa. I've lived in the city of Davenport 37 years. I, Sean Egan, strongly object to the alley vacate. Barbara Williams, Sam, and Jennifer Foley, Sheila Craig, all north of the alley. With notarized documentation that they oppose this also. Should be in your guys' packet. Five residents opposing the alley vacate. Showed you the paperwork. 120-plus petitioners against the alley vacate. The May's Garage building permit, which lives on the corner, that has been stating and pushing this a lot, basically states in the building permit that he is going to use the alley. Kind of tells me that he uses the alley, we use the alley, there's several other people that use the alley, as you'll hear from tonight. Public progress refers to benefits the general public, or for use that is considered to the public interest, not just for private benefit of one sole person, and or intended use of property must serve a public benefit such as safety or convenience. Conveyance. There's only one resident on this alley that would benefit from conveyance. All other neighbors of the alley would be repressed or withheld from any benefit. The Commissioner's statement. The Commissioner is charged with making recommendations to the City Council on matters that pertain to the city's comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan, which is used to guide development, redevelopment. I'll say it again, redevelopment, not to recede, regress, or have city decline. The Commissioner voted this eight to one in denial. Please move forward with that. The city does use the alley. We, the city, uses the alley. Code enforcement officers for rental certification inspections. They can't park on Locust. They're not going to walk from Dougalby. They park there and walk to our properties to inspect them. Safety for them to use the alley. The Commission, now I said that, the alley. If the alley is vacated, it is only timed before there is a major accident coming out of 2342 East Locust. Could we save a life? Why are we vacating this anyway? There's nobody asking you to spend any money on this. Leave it the way it is. It's been that way since 1960s. I have a picture here, if anybody would like to look at it. You could pass it. We could pass it around. Council members, Mayor, you have a great responsibility to do. Vote this down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Please state your name and address or word, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Caleb Fielder. I live at 2744 East 50th Court in Davenport, and I'm the property manager for 2342 East Locust. As it was stated, that this is a huge safety issue. I strongly oppose you vote it down. I have to, it is a rental property, so I do visit the property when needed, and this is my vehicle at the curb, and the wall that hinders the view to see anybody coming down Locust Street. You can't even see my side mirror. When I'm in the vehicle, this is what I see, the five-foot-plus retaining wall that sits five foot nine inches from the city curb. I know it's been stated before, on and off, that the city doesn't know who owns the wall. It is on city property, and on the February 4th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, city engineer Brian Chat stated that it was the city's wall. So I'm not sure why we're keeping going back and forth. This wall hinders this line of sight to see out of this property. That's why we use the alley. We use the alley. 2356 East Locust uses the alley. I'm not sure why we're even coming here to vacate an alley that's being used for safety reasons. Again, I oppose this vacate, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Hi there, Chris Townsend, Townsend Engineering, 2224 East 12th Street in Davenport. My client, Sean Egan, owns the house at 2342 East Locust. There's a couple of things that have come up in the several meetings we've been here. I thought I'd try to clear up real quick. One, she just was talking about the retaining wall ownership. Kind of went back and forth, it was the city's and then nobody knew. Well, we've surveyed that property, and actually that retaining wall sits completely in the right-of-way. It's about the back of the wall, six inches south of the property line into the right-of-way. And it matches, you can drive along there, the wall's on Bell, it matches exactly. This thing, no doubt, and I can't verify that, but was no doubt constructed when Locust Street was widened, and it matches everything else, even the slopes on the ends, you know? So I mean, it's pretty obvious whose wall it is, it's the city's. So anyway, that kind of clears that up. In the staff report under technical review, they talk about traffic accidents, which I think is kind of the key deal here. And one thing that was brought up, that there were no, there's no accidents reported at this address, reason is because there's an alley people use, and all the accidents really are on Bell where those two retaining walls are. I got in an accident in 1988 in that exact intersection, actually when I was 16, which I can't get out of my head, I guess. And actually, that is even better. That intersection's better. That thing's, you know, 30 feet wide, where we have 10 feet to the retaining wall. So you have way more visibility at that intersection than you do at this residence. So, you know, the safety triangle, nothing checks out, no matter what standard you use. We looked at everything, and it just really doesn't. And the beauty of it is, my client, he's not opposed to, you know, it seems like a fight between neighbors, which we get into quite a bit, but my client's not opposed to the city fixing this. All he wants to do is have a safe way to get out onto that street. He'd vacate that alley too, if he could get out there safely. The way to do that, and we looked at it, we surveyed it, you can get rid of that wall, you could build a new one back-a-way if you want, get rid of it, slope that, at least if it was a four-to-one slope, something mowable, something decent, I'm sure he'd go for it. Obviously, that would cost money, and that would be on the city. So the last thing, you know, this one's pretty simple. I mean, I drove, I drove over there and tried to drive out, and really, you just have to do it. I mean, I think you really just go over there and do it, and you'll settle it very quickly. I drive a Honda Pilot. I sat there and had to roll my window down and listen for cars to come. And then my guy that works for me, Cory, he went there in his truck, which is a big Ram pickup truck. He said he could see the roofs of the cars, but barely, and not soon enough to pull out, you know? So it's just, it's just tough, you know? It's difficult. I drove there on the way to work this morning, 6:20 this morning, there were five cars driving out Locust that turned right there, right before this house, and there were five cars going, nobody was going under 45 miles per hour. So there's another thing. You know, there's just, there's just a lot of factors here, and I think it's a pretty simple one we have, that you guys just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? State your name and address or word, please.
My name is Aubrey Sennett. I live at 2304 West 3rd Street. I have lived in Davenport my whole life. I also am a current renter from Sean Egan, and I've previously rented from him before as well. This is one property that I would never even think about renting, as long as that wall is up. I've driven it in that alley, and as soon as I pulled up to that wall, I backed out, and I used the alley to get out because I was scared that I couldn't see, you know, any vehicles coming, and I did not want to pull out of there, I did not feel safe. I just strongly oppose to vacate this alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? State your name and address or word, please.
Hello, I'm McKenzie Chandler. I live at 3842 Pearl Avenue here in Davenport. I am against this alley vacate. I frequently visit 2342 East Locust Street for work, and I feel unsafe exiting the property. Thank you.
Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
My name's Scott Forrest, and my address is 2404 West 59th Street. And as previous people had said, I have a full-size pickup truck, but if you haven't driven it, you should have driven it, because you have to pull basically onto Locust Street to see how I'm coming track it correctly. It is unsafe, so I oppose the vacate.
Thank you. State your name and address or word, please.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Egan. I live at 828 Waverly Road, and I am also the owner of 2342 East Locust. I oppose this vacate more for safety reasons than anything, as everybody has stated. Pulling out of this driveway is scary in itself. Another one is kids, people walking the sidewalk. You literally have to have your front bumper almost into Locust Street before you can even decide if you're going to pull out. So again, I strongly oppose.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? All right. Seeing no one, we will go to council comments. Anyone from the city council? We'll start with Alderman Jobjen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions, I guess, for staff, maybe our corporation counsel, Huff. Term was brought up by one of the gentleman's, conveyance. What's the difference between conveyance and vacate?
So the purpose of conveyance is to transfer property from one owner to another. So this proposed ordinance is to vacate, meaning we're basically lifting the right-of-way designation of this area. The city would still own the property, and at this point, no petition for conveyance has been filed by any resident or any neighbor asking to purchase this land. So the city still maintains complete ownership of this land and can allow for its use how they see fit.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. And then, is there anything, and again, you don't need to answer this tonight, maybe maybe next week, is there anything that would be illegal about shutting off that ingress/egress point at East Locust, right? Talk about the safety of exiting the property onto Locust. I mean, if we want to say, hey, you know, the safest, least risky way for people to enter and exit this property is an alleyway off of Dougalby. I mean, is there something legally that says that that point has to be maintained? I guess I'm unaware of anything there, so I didn't know if you could do a little research for us on that, or if you know.
I'll look into that, just to make sure I cover the question fully.
Okay, cool. And then, I guess, last thing, we've talked recently about, you know, even yesterday at management update meeting about kind of different strategies for maintaining, I guess this might be for our city administrator. Is there a way in which this gravel alley that I think people could say is probably not the best way to have an alley? Is there a way to kind of upgrade that surface at kind of a less expensive cost for city property owners, so to speak?
We have had some internal discussions about that. We have not talked with the two adjoining property owners at this point. We intend to do that before the next cycle here, so everybody's got that information at hand.
Cool. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Anyone else from the city council?
I would, whenever somebody has a chance to say whatever they need to say.
I'm not seeing anybody, Alderman Kelly, so go ahead.
Okay, so I would love to see, he's saying it's from the 60s, because as a resident of being in my home for 54 years, and that's directly up the street, I would love to see, so I hope that the council has a copy of that. And Doug, there are some clarifications that I'm going to need on the email that you sent out to us as council folks, so I will email you, because everybody keeps talking about that wall, but nobody wants to say who has ownership of that wall. And I understand safety, so I just question if safety was an issue, the purchase of the home, because I know that there was never an actual alley of connection from Locust Street to Dougalby in this area. So there's just some clarification that I feel like everybody needs to know, and not just who's passing the blame or who owns what. So I will email back to Doug on that email that he sent out to the alder folks on the information of that. So I definitely would like to see what we can get clarified before our next meeting. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. We will go to Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. C.A. Maxheimer, it looks like Alderman Kelly will have additional follow-up questions for you. When you provide the answers, can you please provide those to all of council?
Certainly, we'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Attorney Huff, do we know definitively who owns the wall at this point? Can you state that?
Information that I've received from our city engineer is that we cannot find an ownership document that kind of clearly, like we would expect on a deed or other kind of property device, to see that. Hearing Mr. Townsend say that they surveyed it, I would, of course, love to see that survey so that I can look at it and make that determination. Certainly, we just haven't been able to effectively validate the kind of ownership there. We suspect that it likely was part of when Locust was widened, but we don't know, you know, common practice at that time, also, I've been told, is sometimes owners along those types of things would privately hire the contractors kind of doing other work to build them walls as well on their private property. So that, I think that's why staff is kind of wanting to know exactly kind of how this wall came to be, and has been looking for that document. So that's what we're trying to do, and so I would certainly like that, to see that survey, and that would be helpful in kind of understanding of the situation.
Okay. And I think that's important information for the council and us being able to make an informed decision. Alderman Tim Dunn.
Is it possible to check this out with a permit system? There had to be a permit pulled somewhere.
I'll let the city engineer talk about what he's looked at.
All right. Thank you.
Brian Chat, city engineer. No permits were found in our building permit system. I did go all the way back to when these houses were built, and then strongly out through what I could find in the 1968 through 1970 files for the widening of Locust Street, and just based on what I found there, I was able to find construction documents, right-of-way acquisition and easement acquisition, basically all the way from, I believe it was Bridge Avenue to Jersey Bridge Road. Every single property, I went through the entire stack. This particular property did not have any easements purchased at that exact time, and there were no plans for the wall within that same file. So that's based on what I was able to find.
And it can't be found in archive anywhere?
Not that I found.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the city council? All right. Seeing none, I will give some comments on this one. So we've been looking at it closely in our community development committee and trying to just evaluate what the different courses of action the city council could take. So of course, when you're developing courses of action, the first course of action is to do nothing. So we could not vacate the right-of-way and keep it as it has been for a long time. We could vacate the right-of-way but establish an access easement, which would mean that it's not public right-of-way anymore, but we, the city, could determine who's allowed to use that easement for access, and it could just be anybody who has a need to use it to get to those homes there. And I think that's kind of what Alderman Rick Dunn was talking about yesterday as a course of action. We could vacate it with no easement and then convey the land, and we'd have to decide how to convey the land, because there's multiple homeowners, and we do do that, and there's different ways that we can do it. But if we did it without an access easement, the property owners would lose access off of that alleyway to their properties, which in evaluating, I do think there is value there. And then, the fourth one that just came up, or came to me in the course of this meeting, so if you have others, please tell me. But you could vacate the right-of-way but then ensure that the other property that has the retaining wall has safe ingress/egress to their property from Locust Street. Now, that, of course, depends on if we can determine who owns the wall, and also, it's going to be very expensive. It doesn't make a lot of sense for the city to be the petitioner on something and then hand themselves an expensive bill to fix a wall. So while it is an option, I don't think it's a great option. I tend to believe that there is a need for ingress/egress from that alleyway, whether it is an easement, an access easement, or an alley. So I tend to gravitate to those solutions, but I'm not certain which one is the best. It was good to hear city administrator Max Siner say that he was going to be reaching out to the property owners this week to kind of talk through what that might look like. And I think it's important, if we're looking at an access easement, because we have dealt with these, sometimes they, you need to have good ground rules about maintenance and access and all of that, so we would need to make sure that there was good agreement and it was well documented before we entered into that. So we will keep this item on discussion, and we will talk about it again next week. All right, on to item number two. Item number two is a resolution approving case F-25-04, being the request of Des Moines Restorations LLC on behalf of Rotor Holdings LLC for a final plat of Hose Station 7 parking lot, a two-lot subdivision on 1.78 acres located at 430 Taylor Street. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a motion approving the appeal to overturn the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to deny case COA 24-20, a request for exterior alteration at the Paul and Mina Jansen House located within the Homburg Local Landmark Historic District at 418 West 7th Street. Matthew Bevert is the petitioner. Please note that a yes vote overturns Historic Preservation Commission's decision and a no vote upholds the Historic Preservation Commission's decisions. Before I open this up for public comment, I am going to take a point of privilege as the chair and also as a member of the City Council Code of Conduct Committee. So on March 14th, the Code of Conduct Committee received a complaint asking us to review whether or not Alderwoman McGinnis had a conflict of interest regarding item number three on our agenda. This person also asked us to evaluate whether or not Alderwoman McGinnis violated the city council code of conduct. The Code of Conduct Committee met and reviewed the complaint. Based on our review, we do not believe that Alderwoman McGinnis has a conflict of interest, and we found no evidence that she violated the code of conduct. On the matter of conflict of interest, we believe Alderwoman McGinnis should be allowed to participate in the conversation and vote. On March 31st, we received a second email from the same person stating that Alderwoman McGinnis is too involved and biased, making her unable to be impartial in making a decision on item number three. The Code of Conduct Committee believes that Alderwoman McGinnis is the only person who can answer the question of whether or not she is able to be impartial in the matter. We brought this question to the attention of Alderwoman McGinnis. For her consideration, I will let her share her thoughts with you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Grip, and I want to thank the Code of Conduct Committee for your timely action in this matter. However, in my heart, I believe that recent personal attacks have made it impossible for me to be objective in this matter. In written communication, the petitioners have recklessly and falsely accused me of corrupt practices. They have also accused our staff and volunteer commissioners of being corrupt and/or incompetent. So while I have no conflict of interest, I personally feel I have a conflict of conscience. I cannot be objective about this matter at this point. Therefore, I am recusing myself from any discussion surrounding this matter, and when the time comes to vote, I will abstain. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. And just again, a point of privilege before we open it up, I did want to kind of reiterate what the city council is evaluating and voting on, because we don't see these very, we don't see appeals from the HPC very often. I think I've only done one in my time on council, so they're very few and far between. So I'll read from the, from the ordinance. So, "Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Determination. The petitioner is appealing the commission's decision to the city council pursuant to Section 14.01.060G of the Davenport Municipal Code. The appeal criteria. The city council, after hearing all the evidence, shall review the commission's decision and base its ruling on the following criteria. Number one, whether the commission has exercised its powers and followed the guidelines established by law and ordinance. And two, whether the commission's actions were patently arbitrary and capricious." So the point is, we're not necessarily here tonight or next week to argue about the style of the door. That squarely fits within the HPC's purview. Our job is to answer the two criteria on whether the commission exercised its powers and followed the guidelines established by law, and whether the commission acted arbitrary and capriciously. And so with that, we will open it up for public conversation. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item?
Good evening, city council. My name is Matthew Bevert. I live at 418 West 7th Street, Ward 3. And as stated, I am here appealing the Historic Preservation Commission decision to deny my proposed backdoor on my house. Just to give you a little bit of background, we have lived in this house for eight years and have slowly been remodeling it back to a single-family home. All the work has been completed, has been fully funded by us. We have not received any kind of outside funding or grants or anything like that. Our home is not a predominant home or showcase home in the neighborhood. I guess you would classify it as a contributing or supporting structure of the Homburg Historic District. We believe that the HPC commissioners acted outside of the boundaries of the law. They voted more to punish us, the property owners. They did not vote on the merits of our project. The commissioner instead voted on our behavior, because they wanted, they were mad at us and decided to punish us and take it out on us. We believe that the commissioners' vote to deny our original application was arbitrary and capricious and not based on merit. The merit of our appeal is essentially the state historical guidelines emphasizing the front-facing or public-facing side of a building or property, not emphasizing the rear portion of the building or property. And on at least two occasions during the hearing on January 14th, city staff informed the commissioners of this guideline. The first quote being alterations to the rear of the home have minimum impact to the characteristics to the district. The second quote being street-facing and prominent sides matter more and weigh at a higher rate. So during that hearing, this guideline was acknowledged and repeated many times by the commissioners themselves. Chairman Hustedi, quote, "Can't see it from the street," end quote. George Eaton said, "Not seen from the street, size looks good, looks much better." Chris Kreutz, quote, "Does it bother me facing the alley? No." Hustedi, "I've been down the alley with new porch, seems to fit the scale." Gomez, "Do I think it looks appropriate? I'm not a fan, but again, it is the alley." Hustedi again, "They proposed alterations to the rear facade will have minimum impact on the characteristics of the historic district." Gomez, "I know this is on the alley, is it detrimental? No." And Bob McGivern states in his deliberation on what to do, looks to city staff and says, "I'm clearly looking for some guidance from staff here, because I'm having a very difficult time and clarity." So Bob McGivern eventually voted in favor of our door, based on the merit. Having publicly shamed me on our procedure, because we, he eventually listened to city staff and understood the guidelines and saw the merit and voted accordingly. He was able to put his emotions aside, he listened to the staff, he understood the guidelines and voted on merit, not on procedure. We here are asking you, city council, to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? State your name and address or word, please.
Hi, my name is Christine Dynas. I also, 418 West 7th Street. But before I begin, I just would like to point out that the city council is acting in a judicatory capacity as judges, and after the appellate has given their statement, we would like the opportunity to defend ourselves, so. And I'm ready. So my name's Christine Dynas. Thank you so much for having us here. So we put in the store, there's the before, there's the after picture. We've been working on our house for eight years, you know, making repairs to this, you know, it's fractured. It was in four apartments, slowly turning our home back into a single-family home steadily as we can afford it and using our disposable funds and income. So during the Historic Preservation Commissioners or HPC January 14th meeting, their video is evidence that proves that the Historic Preservation Commission acted outside the bounds of the law. So this commission, despite hearing or not following national or state of Iowa Historic Preservation Standards and Guidelines, decided instead to vote, as my husband had said, on our behavior, because they were mad at us and wanted to punish us. This is not their job, and by doing this, they acted outside of the law. The Historic Preservation Commissioners were over-emotional. They made a mistake, okay? They put their emotions ahead of themselves, which, you know, we are all, we all can do that. In doing this, though, their actions were patently and arbitrarily capricious. So this is evident through their words. I mean, don't take my words for it. So I really wanted to show video, we're not allowed to show video, which is our evidence, so yeah, don't take my word for it, please watch the video. And on January 14th, minutes 1 through 26. So here's an example, Commissioner Chris Kreutz, behavior. "I'm not really a fan, I mean, I was called in the last meeting," I'm quoting Chris, "but I wasn't physically here. It's on the alley, I don't know, it doesn't bother me from a preservation standpoint. Following, I own three historic houses and following the rules can be a pain, but I follow it, and for someone just to go and do this, I don't care if it looked perfect, like a Queen Anne, and the fact that you didn't go through the process is very offensive." So, and then we have Commissioner Bob McGivern, who I'll just quote, "Shameful, shameful, shameful. You're going to ask me to approve behavior? I find completely offensive." I mean, wow, really? Okay, here we are, working on our home, doing what we think the city of Davenport wants us to do, right? Fixing up our beautiful home, making improvements, turning it back into a single-family home, and this is what we get as citizens? Treated like this? I mean, really, is this okay? So at this point, city staff had to step in, and I quote, "City staff." So I understand your point of view, and as Chairman Hustedi mentioned, please consider it based off the request. It makes our jobs easier and to do it from a place of logic rather than emotion. So here we are, you know, staff having to step in, trying to calm down the commission. So we have met with our neighbors, and they have all told me and my husband that they love our door and that it looks stupendous, and how it is an improvement of the backside of our property. The commissioners and their statements, not one of them said anything negative about our improvements, that our French door deterred from the neighborhood. No one said it looked bad, and every one of the commissioners agreed that they could not see it. Neither was there any mention of negative effect on the historic tenure of the district. If anything, it takes away an eyesore, and it is complete improvement from what was there previously. I mean, look, come on. So the commissioners were blinded by our actions and we could not, and could not see past our alleged behavior capricious and that they voted not that our project was bad, but because we were bad. They felt animus, a strong feeling of dislike, opposition, and hostility towards us. So the city process is confusing. There are no guidelines, not on your website, for property owners and building owners. So the HPC voted emotionally and rightfully so, and we do apologize. However, cooler heads must prevail. So this is what we're asking you to do. Please, you know, approve it, and we're looking for you to take the time and come back on April 9th and approve our appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Dr. Lisa Killinger. I live at 726 East High in Davenport, and I've lived in my home here in Davenport for about 25 years. First of all, I wanted to thank you for the work you do. I know it's important work, and it's also difficult work, and I appreciate, you know, you and your service to our community. What you do is important, and also what we do as citizens in Davenport is extremely important as well, especially those who choose to pour their heart and soul into our city to try to make improvements, because all too many people get in a house in Davenport, live in it, let it run down, and then move out as soon as they can, leaving behind a scar in our society and lost tax revenue for us as Davenport residents. It's very, very sad. So I am here because of what I read in the newspaper. I didn't know all of this was going on. I don't have a horse in this race, but I don't like when people that I've known for a decade get called shameful, when they are in fact the least shameful people I have ever known. These are people who I have packed food at the food banquet, these are people that I have, know their children and their family, and these are people who I know have not had but maybe one vacation in the last eight years, because they have chosen every night and every weekend to be pouring their blood, sweat, and tears into this house, to try to take it away from the scar that it was in the Gold Coast neighborhood into a wonderful home by painstakingly looking up historical documents, because the guidelines here, as have been stated, and I have reviewed them, are not super clear for homeowners, and they have made great decisions throughout in the restoring of this historical home. I just want to say that this has been with, I'm gonna say tens and tens of thousands of dollars, but I suspect it's more in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been poured into this house. That's above and beyond the call for a Davenport citizen. It really is, and we, as citizens, as leaders, and certainly as the Historic Preservation Group, should be supportive. And when we choose, instead of being supportive of our homeowners, what we get is this sort of punitive, critical sort of butting of heads that isn't healthy for our city. It doesn't end up with the outcome that we want, homes that get restored successfully, because homeowners get disgusted, they get obstructed, and they walk away, leaving yet again another scar in our, in our community. So we, I think, in this case especially, is because I'm here to support this family, I've known them for a long time, that, I've learned a long time ago, don't mess with a librarian, they've looked stuff up. And they are probably the smartest in the room, and they've looked stuff up, and they are not gonna come here unprepared and say things that are inaccurate, neither historically, neither policy-wise. They are going to have known, and they knew that that was a door that was typical in the 1800s, and they put in a beautiful door that took away what we used to have slumlords use, the cheapest door possible, and they made it lovely, and they made it more functional. And now, it's sad to see that anybody would stand in the way of that. So I would ask that the group allow this family to go ahead with the work and continue it, because we would like to see a home like this and any other home in the Gold Coast to complete their project to fruition, always maintaining the historical nature of it, and I think these are lovers of old homes, and they do just that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Hi, Danny Hankner, Ten Vista Court. I've been living in Davenport now for 19 years. I've been electrician for 20, and I've been running my own shop now for 12 years, and so I've done a lot of work in a lot of homes in Davenport and the surrounding area. And I can tell you that it is, it's expensive enough, especially in this day and age, post 2020, to redo anything. And especially in this neighborhood, because I've done a lot of work, including for this house as well, I've done a lot of work down in that neighborhood. Those homes are old, they're not in good shape, and it takes a massive amount of time and energy to redo these. And I remember, like, even looking at this picture, I remember being on that old stair years ago when they redid their service, how janky it was. They're doing a great job, and I've, like I said, I've worked for a lot of different people. I'm here because I want to see, I want our citizens to be encouraged to renovate their homes. I don't want more roadblocks and more barriers and more nonsense that they have to cross in order to do nice work and make Davenport beautiful. I want to encourage that. I've gotten to know them, they're fantastic people, and I say this, look, that building that collapsed down the road, I worked for that guy, too. That guy was a slumlord, and I would never be here saying anything nice about him, but I will defend them, because they are, they're wonderful people, they've done it right. And another thing I can tell you, too, as a contractor, just as that last line item about the retaining wall that was built, and there's no permit, and no, nobody knows whose is it, like, I get into situations like this all the time, where homeowner, whoever it is, they start a project, they don't know the processes. is, they start a project, they don't know the processes, something happens, and then I get a call because the inspector shut down the work. And so we come in there and we do it right, we work with the inspector, we work with the homeowner, and get it done, and we never have a problem. I've never, and whoever the authority you have in jurisdiction is, you can ask the local inspectors anywhere, and they'll tell you that we always do things right, we do it well, we have a great reputation. I have never seen a situation like this where I had to come to the city council in order to be overturned because there was some miscommunication along the way. This happens all the time, like I said, just this last one, there's no permit, there's a retaining wall, whatever, this happens. But anybody who is a contractor and we're working with people, we come in, we resolve it, and you just move on. So I don't, I don't understand why there's such a hiccup over being frustrated by a beautiful door on the back of a home that nobody sees. I understand that you guys are going after the protocol. But again, when, in my line of work, I've been doing this for a long time, miscommunication happens all the time, and we come in and we kind of act as arbiters often. We never have, I've never seen this. This is crazy town to me. So I want to see people encouraged, I want to, like, they should be thanked, like, they've spent massive amounts of money, and I wish more people would do that. But I don't want to see people who are doing that have more barriers to success. So anyway, that's all I've got to say. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? State your name and address or word, please.
My name is Amy Broom, and I own 411 West A Street. I was on the Gold Coast Committee for probably around two years. So I would say, recently I turned my house into a rental. I can see the backyard. It's beautiful. I don't live there currently, but it's absolutely beautiful. And being on the Gold Coast Committee and working with Marion, which she's a lovely woman, it's a lot of pressure for her, I think, because she defined the guidelines...
If you could speak to the council. Yeah, we just, don't speak directly about anybody in the room, and stick to the item that we're discussing.
Okay. And I would say that the whole guidelines on the historical is very unclear, and in order to find those regulations or whatever it is, keep ordinances, is very unclear and hard to find. So I encourage them to be more specific and be user-friendly. But like I said, I'm just a neighbor, and I think it's beautiful, and I fully support them. And I applaud you. Thank you. All right, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
My name is Richard Stone. I live at 510 West 6th Street. I've been the homeowner in the Gold Coast now for over 10 years. We purchased the Lambright Isles Peterson House from the city back in 2015, and we started a major renovation, restoration of that house. We prioritized having a local Historic Preservation Committee in the fact that when we purchased this house, we wanted to ensure that a major investment we were about to make was going to hold up, and they weren't going to come in and build, you know, apartments next to it, or, and we were glad to see that they had this Historic Commission in place and also ensure the historic nature of the neighborhood and inspire others to restore their houses too. So we thought our jumping in to restore this house would be an impetus for other people to look at some of the other houses and restore those, and I think it has. We are now living in the house after five years of renovation. We've been living in it for five years. We've worked with the HPC and city employees and neighbors to accomplish our restoration. The HPC has been very helpful for us. We've been getting various projects approved, obviously with our restoration, it took many, many visits to the Historic Preservation Committee. Not only did they bring up things we had not thought about, but they also worked with us along with city employees. We're always able to, we weren't always able to get what we wanted, but we were able to work with the HPC and work out to get something that was agreeable to both of us. It sometimes took a little longer. I think the HPC and other city employees even made site visits to us, set up workshops for us, aided us in contacting the correct people to get things done. We certainly understand the frustration that can come with the restoration projects and the desire to improve one's home. We now have a homeowner who is having an issue with the HPC decision, excuse me, HPC decision regarding their window. The homeowner proceeded with the window changes without HPC approval, leading to a conflict. Unfortunately, this led to a series, this led to a series of emails and inappropriate communications, including abuse of the HPC members, city employees, and even their own older woman, all of whom were only doing their jobs. It has become a complex issue rather than a resolution to the problem. We concur with our neighbors that this situation should have been, should have not been escalated. A solution should have been worked out between the homeowners and the HPC. The councils should clear the members of the HPC, the city employees involved with the case, and the older woman, McGinnis, and would like to give a special thanks to Sarah Baugh, our neighbor, in helping us understand what was going on in this situation. We greatly appreciate the dedication and support provided by the HPC and the city's employees throughout our restoration. We hope for a constructive resolution to this matter and continued collaboration with our community. We plan to attend the council meeting for this reason. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Good evening. My name is Jack Haberman. I've been resident of the Hamburg Historic District now for 27 years. I'm also president of Gateway Redevelopment Group and husband, Olden Mary McGinnis, for those that don't know. I'm here tonight to show my support for the Historic Preservation Commission and their procedures, which I think is very important. For over 25, over 25 years ago, a group of residents in the Hamburg Historic District had a vision to restore the neighborhood back to its former glory. They formed a group called the Gold Coast Hamburg Historic District Association. I think, Brian, are you going to pass out the brochures to the... Okay, so we have the brochure for each one of you about that. This is a brochure that the Neighborhood Association puts out. I think this is like the third or fourth edition of this. Besides that, they formed a group, a redevelopment group called Gateway Redevelopment Group, which mission was to save the abandoned buildings in the Hamburg District. They also held home tours to promote the neighborhood, and they spent lots of time and money to restore their homes. To help to practice investment, they were able to, the majority of the residents agreed, to be Davenport's first local historic district. Today, out of the 18-plus historic districts that we now have in Davenport, we are still the only local historic district that the HPC rules on, that's involved with. Despite this inconvenience and having to follow the guidelines of the HPC, it has helped make the Hamburg Historic District the most unique neighborhood in Davenport, and I'm sure everybody will agree upon that. We are the premier neighborhood for historic preservation. It has also united the neighborhood with a common theme of historic preservation while helping to protect our homes from inappropriate changes to the district's historic stock. And that's really important. It stops people from doing things that shouldn't be done. Today, you, the council, need to support the HPC so new people wanting to move into our neighborhood understand the importance of the guidelines to the health of the neighborhood. There's rules, and rules should be followed, and these people did not follow the rules. I like to say, 30 years ago, we would have been very hard-pressed to have people even drive through our neighborhood. Yet, on a recent home tour run by a Neighborhood Association, we had over 1,000 people pay the association $15 each just to see what we've been able to accomplish. So I'm here tonight to ask you to support the Historic Preservation Commission and what they've done. And if you're going to watch the video in January, please watch the December meeting when they came through the first time, and the commission worked very hard to work with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Hi, I'm David Plasenek, Word 3, another resident in the Gold Coast. I've been a resident of the Gold Coast for just over five years. Two years ago, we decided to purchase a house in the neighborhood. One thing I wanted to remind everyone about is what Kyle Grub said earlier, that this is not specifically about the appropriateness of the door. The discussion is whether the HPC followed appropriate procedures. So whether you agree that the door looks good or not is irrelevant at this point. As someone who is a resident and decided to buy a house in that home, in that neighborhood, I believe it is important for homeowners to do their own due diligence and be aware of what the requirements are for getting permits and permissions, including historic preservation, which is why, before deciding to purchase a home in the neighborhood, I was aware, I researched, that there was a housing, that there was a Historic Preservation Commission, even attended a Historic Preservation Meeting so that I understood what the process would be. We have not done any external renovations to our house yet, which would require it, but I wanted to make sure that I was aware of the process to be able to initiate it at the beginning of any such project before deciding to purchase a home in the area. While I do believe that it is certainly admirable for anyone to work on renovating a historic home, as I've decided to start working on myself, there's a process of these things for a reason. There's a process, you know, there's a reason for building codes, there's a reason for the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and there's a reason that those should be followed. So even if you're doing everything right, if you're not following the procedures for approvals, that is a problem in itself. I certainly encourage anyone interested in this to read all of the meeting notes from the two relevant HPC Commission meetings and watch the videos, which I did. One thing I would note about the January meeting, a lot of people have talked about what various members said off the cuff during that meeting, but I would also note that during that meeting, the HPC chairperson pointed out that, at least in his opinion, that this could go either way on the merits, that it was, in his opinion, reasonable to vote for or against this door on the merits. So just because members voted against it does not mean that they were doing so purely out of emotion or for a punitive to the owner for not following the process. It is perfectly reasonable to have disapproved, to vote the way that they did, based solely on the merits, both those that voted for and against. I would also note that, again, definitely recommend anyone interested in this to watch both of the videos. Someone mentioned that there was a newspaper article about it. It's a very brief article and does not touch on most of the key facts that were presented at these HPC meetings. So if you're interested in having an informed opinion about it, definitely watch the videos. But I would like you to uphold the HPC decision. I think that they acted appropriately in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? State your name and address.
Sure, Shagna, third ward. I guess I need to know when the HPC's procedures were established and exactly who established them. And I did look at the paperwork at it, and I believe that a lot of the language is very subjective. It is not very specific. And if it was specific, I think there would be a whole lot more room for what is happening here today to these homeowners. As someone who has also come into Davenport into an historic home that is not individually listed but in a historic district, and a lot of time, energy, effort, money, love is put into these homes to bring them back. And when someone comes along after you've put all that time and energy and then wants to rip it out simply because it didn't follow procedure, when in fact they said it actually enhanced the appearance of the home, the aesthetics of the home, I find that absolutely ridiculous. Just ridiculous that we are even here. Like the electrician said, that we are even here having this conversation is ridiculous. So I hope you guys, when we have a Code of Conduct Committee that is self-regulating and all the other stuff, people on committees that are self-regulating but not necessarily unbiased, you guys need to be able to take a step back and have a clear vision of what is happening here to the people that are moving into this city and who are honestly trying to make it better.
Thank you. Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Joan Wagner. I live at 436 West 7th Street, down the street from the home that's being talked about. I've lived here for 29 years, and I believe that most, if not all, the signers of the original petition to form a Davenport HPC were under the impression that the curb view and not the back of the house would be the focus of preservation efforts. The door-to-door petitioner explained to me that the HPC would be following federal HPC guidelines, which were only for the front of the house and not the back. Before signing the petition, I checked the federal website for the historic neighborhoods and read that indeed it only addressed the front of my house. Otherwise, I would not have signed the petition and would have fought against it because I never wanted anyone in charge of my home other than me. I found it to read that these were only guidelines and not law, and were indeed for the front curb view, not the rear. So I signed the petition. I have since been told by two past HPC board members that the HPC is not concerned with the back of the house in approving construction work. When I watched the video of the HPC meeting of January 14th, I saw some board members take the situation personally, not objectively. Instead of discussing proposed design, they were calling out the homeowner's actions, calling completely offensive and shameful. I was told by one of the past board members of the HPC that they would not be able to sign the petition for Matt and Christine because they want to improve their own property and do not want any repercussions from the HPC board. Does the HPC follow an impartial, objective, clearly documented, and repeatable process that avoids personal feelings? When a homeowner invests in their property, the community wins as property values increase and the city wins as property taxes increase. The house at 418 West 7th Street was built in 1902. In 1937 or so, it was remodeled into four apartments. Matt and Christine are returning it to a single-family dwelling, leaving the front in the original historic style, while creating as much more modern and energy-efficient interior and rear of the home, increasing the value of the home as they spend their own money, not federal funds or grants. We need to work with all our neighbors, new and old, to keep projects like this going. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. I just want to make a correction. I watched both videos this afternoon, and watching the second one and watching the vote, I will say, and it was very clear on what they were supposed to vote on, and it was the merits. And I watched two vote. Yes, go ahead, looks okay, the merits are okay. And four say, we can't allow this behavior. So it wasn't all of them voting on the merits, it was only two of them. Four of them were more concerned about the process and not the criteria that they were supposed to be voting on.
Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Duane Timm, 630 West Fifth Street. I am the president of the Gold Coast. The case before the council is whether to allow an inappropriate sliding door in a historic house to be forgiven, or find a different remedy to the problem. There was a discussion with the HPC about replacing a door and a small window on the homeowner's backside of the house. Replacement of those items were discussed when permission was granted to replace the deck. The HPC had asked for additional ideas for the replacement of the door and the small window, but in the meantime, the homeowners took on themselves to go ahead and install that oversized sliding door. The real question here is to ask the council, if they stand behind a city commission made up of people who give their time and knowledge to the city, so that a historic district can maintain the built characteristics that make the Gold Coast a historic district. If this council sides with the homeowner, you have usurped the Historic Preservation Commission's hard work and power. It would be my suggestion that the homeowners have a work session with the HPC, not a meeting, but a work session right here at this table, and see if there's a resolution to this situation. When we worked on our house, the HPC, the Dream Plus team, and other city government personnel were at this very table, and I can say they were just more than helpful with their comments and guiding us along. The result of the labor of planning can be seen when you drive by the corner of Fifth Street and Gaines and see the 1866 home of John Root as the gateway to the historic district. Window sizes were never changed, brick chimneys were not removed but rebuilt, a long-gone side porch was rebuilt, working shutters were installed in the house. All of this was done with permission of the city and the HPC. Yes, extra work, extra money, but so well worth the effort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Step to the name, step to the lectern, name and address.
Paul Voskis, Third Ward. Okay, I'm uninformed about what's going on. I'm just looking at the personalities involved and the issues. And to me, I spoke before about compromise. You obviously have some people who believe one way and some another, okay? And apparently, they didn't quite mesh, and now here we are. I understand them saying, both sides, you know, you have a job to do, and I know it's tough. But I've also talked many times with people about, you know, when you have a problem or situation, you compromise, you sit down and you work it out. That clearly hasn't happened. And again, I don't know anything, the actual particulars, I know about where the house is, I know what's going on there, kind of. But to me, it's clearly, one side feels they're right, the other side feels they're wrong, and they will not talk. And yes, we need to improve all parts of this city, everything, but there also has to be compromises and sometimes exceptions. I don't see that here, just from watching the personalities involved. And I think if that would have happened, or somebody would have maybe tried to arbitrate, it wouldn't have come here and exploded. I guess that's all I can say, that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address or word, please.
Wakana Dixon, Seventh, yeah, Seventh Ward. I just want to speak positivity, because I actually love to see that someone's working on a historic home. And as you all know, we have had failures with historic property, buildings falling apart, buildings falling down, buildings that are supposed to be worked on and not being worked on. So to see someone actually doing what is needed to keep something up to a good standard, make sure it's not falling apart, and trying to save something beautiful, should be congratulated. Maybe something did not happen the way it should have, but to see the effort means a lot. So I understand that this something has been turned ugly, but let's remember that it's something that's beautiful at the same time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, we will go to, oh, sorry, yep. Name and address or word, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Huston, I am the current chair of the HPC. And I wanted to be sure that everyone had a chance to speak, and we heard good comments on both sides. Initially, I'd like to make sure that everyone understands, there is no animus between the HPC and the homeowners. The HPC is not angry at the homeowners. If you look at the December HPC meeting video, the HPC was quite supportive of the changes the people are trying to make to their home. They are doing good work on that house, they have been doing good work on that house. There's no problem with that. There was some question about the kind of deck they wanted to have, but ultimately, the commission said, fine, go ahead. We were concerned about the door that they were proposing to put in, primarily because this type of door did not exist when this style of home was built. It is not historically accurate. What we asked for was a reconsideration of the fenestration they were going to have, and we asked them to come back. We established a special meeting for that, which they were not able to attend, so we pushed it off to the early January meeting, at which time, nothing was brought forward except the completed job. We did not vote because we were angry. I'm going to refer to the document that the staff provided for us. The project was reviewed for conformance with the standards of review, Chapter 14-160C of the Davenport Municipal Code. The commission determined the certificate of appropriateness did not meet the below standard for review. I was sitting at that meeting, trying to weigh, and if you look at the video, you can see I was kind of going back and forth. I can understand why some of the commissioners voted in favor, I can understand why four of us voted against. And it really comes down to the fact that it did not, the fenestration they placed in the building did not fit the standard for review. That is why I personally voted against it, I cannot explain why the other three voted against it as well. This is unfortunate, this situation that we had this evening, but if you notice, this is extremely rare. The HPC takes its responsibility seriously. We do attempt to work with the homeowners in a positive, constructive manner. We tried to do that in December, it just didn't work out. So unless you have questions specifically to staff, and by the way, you have a terrific staff, who brings forward to us each month the materials that we need to review, they are the ones who carefully look at both code and appropriateness, and recommend to us what we should be doing. And most of the time, we follow their recommendations for good reason. So if you have any questions about staff, I think we do have a member of the city staff here, if you'd like to ask questions to that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing no one else, we will go to council comments. Anyone from the city council?
Can I jump in here real quick?
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you for your time here. I am listening and watching online, and I'm hearing where it sounds like, some people forget that when we're elected or we're put in these positions, that we have to take personal out of the decision-making that we have to make. So I don't know, this is just my perception from watching, and that I hear a lot of personal as opposed to what it should actually be done, and how we can help these people in, or how we can actually do something to benefit this project. So I don't know, this is just my take on it. So I'm just listening, and I just definitely wanted to jump in and say that before anybody got started, because I'm not a professional on the historical stuff, but I get it. I get that there's rules and regulations, but I'm listening to this, and it does sound more personal than it sits down like there's a job and a decision to be made. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. We'll start, we'll go to Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you. In listening to all the comments brought forth tonight from our constituents, some in favor, some against, one that stands out to me is the one regarding whether or not a solution was reached, and obviously, a solution was not reached. I agree, we should be looking for a constructive resolution. Also, listen to the comments regarding rules. Those of you that pay attention to city work know that I am definitely a stickler for the rules, and I agree. Rules are important, they're meant to be followed. Similarly, this matters before the council, because there are rules in place that allow the petitioners to bring an appeal, and for the council to make a decision. Sometimes council decides things that overturns what a commission may say. We have that as our number one on the agenda for community when we're looking at whether or not to vacate an alley. So I do think that it's an important decision that council has to make. However, my biggest concern is as we sit here today, I don't have any evidence that there have been any steps by either the city or the petitioners to try to come up with a solution. I always look at this as, what's the end? And at the end of the day, whether the council votes yes or votes no in the majority, at the end of the day, we need to find a solution for this issue. I would be requesting that not only this item be placed on the discussion agenda, I would want that such be with direction to our legal counsel, to make reasonable efforts to work with these petitioners, to see if an amicable resolution can be reached. I can either make a motion now, or if Alderman Reinerts wants to do so when he sets the agenda, that is fine as well, but I do think that's important before we make a decision next
Before we move on, just to point a clarification, I don't think a request to ask the staff to have a conversation with the petitioner requires a vote. Okay, so.
Any alderman can make a request to staff.
So you made a request to staff on the floor, we don't need to vote on it, and I just wanted to clear that up before we continue the conversation. All right, we'll go to Alderman Reinerts next.
Thank you. I have two questions. Question one, is this home on the historical registry?
Lord Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services, this home is a contributing structure in the Hamburg National and Local Historic District.
Okay. My second question is for staff, related to the permit. Was there a permit pulled for the window, for the, for the door?
For the door specifically?
Yes, the door specifically. I know there was a permit for the interior work, but the permit I saw said, does not include the door.
Correct, there is no permit.
Was there a permit pulled for the door?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderwoman Burkholder.
Thank you. That was my question, was there a permit pulled for the door? Did they go through proper inspections? We constantly talk about our inspections with the city. We have strict rules on how that goes, so I wanted to make sure that permit was pulled, all the inspections that needed to be done were done. We all, as citizens, show concern on that, so those are some major questions to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Rick Dunn.
Thank you. I appreciate what I heard from Alderwoman Newton about trying to come to a compromise, but as I will make it clear, staff does not take direction from one alderman alone. So I just want to make sure, clear that that is going to happen, or we need to do something to make sure that happens.
I have no problem sitting down and orchestrating the meeting, or conducting the meeting myself with the homeowners, to see if there's a reasonable resolution that can be found here, as was stated in the letter to them, and as stated in our city ordinances, there are enforcement actions that the city has available, which I've used my discretion to withhold until the full hearing of the appeal. So I believe that a conversation about what happens, regardless of how the vote turns out, should occur.
Any other comments from the council? Alderwoman Newton?
I guess it's not really a comment, I just want clarification in light of Alderman Dunn's comments, because I know, obviously, we've had instances in the past where direction is provided to staff, staff says a motion is not necessary, but then it never gets followed through, and I know Council House says absolutely has no issue with that, I just want to make sure that that's, basically, I'm asking here if there's consensus from the council, otherwise, we can always, I mean, the motion to, when you set the agenda, putting it on discussion, can come with that direction to staff, to see if any reasonable or an amicable solution can be reached with the petitioners. Just want to make sure we leave here and it's crystal clear.
I have no problem with either methodology.
Okay, I think it's crystal clear. Alderman Jodgin, do you have anything? No? Okay.
We're on discussion.
It will stay, yeah, it will stay on discussion. I did want to have some comments as well.
Very quickly, Alderman Grip, before you finish, I just want to reiterate that the homeowner did request at the beginning of their time to have a chance for rebuttal. Obviously, that can be done, a council request here tonight, or since this is remaining on discussion, she could also have that opportunity next week to speak. I just wanted, because we've had such discussion on that, remind council that request was made by the homeowner, so.
Okay. We can talk later, I've never, I've never seen us give anyone an opportunity at rebuttal at the end of council discussion. If that's something that we are going to start, then that would require conversation by the council. All right, so I talk a little bit about this. So someone said, we should be thanking these people for investing in Davenport and redeveloping an old house. I agree with that, and I thank you for that. Thank you for living in Davenport, thank you for investing in the Gold Coast and being a part of the neighborhood. I also think, we haven't really explicitly said why there was some consternation from the HPC, it's that by the time the HPC went to vote on the matter, the door had already been installed, right? And so there was some question on their part of, what are we doing here, voting on whether a door can be installed or not, if the door in fact has already been installed, right? And certainly, that's not ideal, and certainly, we don't want commissioners having to come in and try to make decisions on things that have already been done, it's not fair to them. I also want to say that I agree with Alderwoman Newton and her approach, it's the approach I would like to take too. It was said, we shouldn't, this shouldn't be elevated here to the city council. I agree, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be, but it is, right? That's the right of the petitioner, what happened at HPC, happened at HPC, but I'm hoping the petitioner can get together and come to a resolution, but we do have to do something with this, this is a neighborhood that has very specific agreed-upon rules. We have neighborhoods in this city that do that, the downtown is one of them. They agree that if you own a business in the downtown, a property in the downtown, when you build something new or remodel something, you go before the design review board, okay? Everybody in the downtown agrees to those rules, and if you're going to have rules, we need to make sure that the rules are being followed. So I think there is an amicable agreement to be had. So I think there is an amicable agreement to be had here. I'm hoping that the parties will come together with that intention, and if something can be reached by next week, it would be great to say motion to delete or petitioner withdrew because a resolution was come to. But if not, you know, we'll have to vote on the merits and the two criteria. So with that, this item will stay on discussion, and I would ask that Alderman Reinert, please set our agenda.
Thank you. I make a motion to place items number one and number three, and leave them on discussion, and place item number two on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Oh, sorry, Alderman Kelly. Are there any opposed? All right, back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert's next.
I would request a five to 10 minute recess.
Sounds wonderful. It's 7:01, be back in your seats, please be back in your seats at 7:10.
How many squirts?
All right, folks, if you're continuing conversation, I'd ask you kindly to take it out in the hallway. If you're staying for the meeting, so be it. And then, Alder folks, Miss McGinnis, if you'd join us back, please. Okay, I'll go to public safety, Alderman Jopshen and Alderman Tim Dunn, Alderman Jopshen, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending chapter 10.68 entitled miscellaneous rules of municipal code of Davenport, Iowa by adding their two definitions and restrictions on the use of motorcycles and motorized bicycles on public sidewalks. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, third consideration ordinance amending chapter 10.84 entitled bicycles of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa by changing the title to bicycles and motorized micro mobility devices, adding thereto a new section with definitions and a new section regarding riding on multi-use paths/trails and including regulations and restrictions for electronic bikes on public sidewalks. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Excuse me, item number three, first consideration ordinance amending schedule 15 pedestrian traffic signals of chapter 10.96 entitled schedules of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa by removing Fairmont Street at Buchanan School. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, resolution approving street lane and public ground closure requests on listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Village of East Davenport Business Association, Village Hops, Village of East Davenport, 12 p.m. to 8 p.m., Saturday, June 14, 2025. Closures, East 11th Street from Miles Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Chrissy Street from East 11th Street, north to the alley, Jersey Ridge Road from East 11th Street, north to the alley. And then Corn Belt Running Club, Arconic Junior Bix Downtown, 12 p.m. to 9 p.m., Friday, July 25, 2025. Closures, East 4th Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive, East 3rd Street from Iowa Street to River Drive, Iowa and Leclerc Streets from 3rd Street to 4th Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on either of these items? Seeing none, anyone from council? Alderwoman Lynch?
Thank you. I do just have a quick question for clarification purposes. Since I own a business in the East Village, is it appropriate for me to vote on this item for the East Village closures and events?
I would say, out of an abundance of caution, you should probably recuse yourself because you do receive, your business could receive some type of benefit from this. However, not having had a chance to kind of talk to you about what benefit that was, if it's one that, hey, I'm just down there, you could potentially vote, but I'd say it's an abundance of caution because you could derive some benefit, then I would abstain.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else from council, that item will move on. Item number five, motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. First, Village of East Davenport Business Association, Village Hops, Village of East Davenport, 2 p.m. to 6 p.m., Saturday, June 14, 2025, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Next, City of Davenport, Party in the Park, various locations, 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Thursday, June 12, 2025, Cork Hill, Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, June 26, 2025, Goose Creek. Next, Thursday, July 17, 2025, Fedgeberry, and Thursday, August 7, 2025, Credit Island, outdoor music over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on either of these items? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And then we have item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, et cetera. First, SNS Mart, 1715 West Kimberly Road, new license/owner, license type, class B, beer/wine carryout. Next, California Britos, 2618 West Locust Street, new license with outdoor area, license type, class C liquor on premises. Next, Gypsy Highway Bar and Grill, 5320 Corporate Park Drive, temporary outdoor area, May 14, June 11, July 9, and August 13. License type, special class C beer/wine on premises. And last, Assumption High School, 1020 West Central Park Avenue, temporary license, April 25. License type, class C retail alcohol license. And then there are those items under section B, the annual license renewals, which are there for review, but I will not read. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, I would then ask Alderman Tim Dunn to please set our agenda.
I'll make a motion to put all items of public safety on the consent agenda. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, I'm sorry, Alderman Jopshen and Alderman Tim Dunn. Next, there is Public Works, Alderman Rick Dunn will discuss, Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is the first consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 13.16 entitled wastewater facilities of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa to revise local discharge limits. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the CY 2024 ADA Rent Program Project by C2 Creative Concrete of DeKalb, Illinois in the amount of $307,034.12. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the CY 2024 Sidewalk Program by C2 Creative Concrete of DeKalb, Illinois in the amount of $146,955.13. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the Grant Avenue East Locust Street to East 29th Street resurfacing project to Hawkeye Pavilion Corporation of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $868,500.54. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Junior Theater renovation at Davenport Learning Center project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Credit Island Causeway Repair Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Dubuque Street, East 29th Street to East 32nd Street Mill and Overlay Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Newbury Street Lincoln Court to North Pine Street Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution setting a public hearing on granting underground electrical easement on city-owned property located on the west side of Harrison Street, south of West 35th Street, parcels P1414-04A and P1414A12 to Mid-American Energy Company. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And finally, item number 10 is a motion awarding a contract for the East 32nd Street Fernwood Avenue to Fernwood Court PCC Patching Project to Maricor LLC of Muscatina, Iowa in the amount of $93,358. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us?
We'll be happy to. I would like to make a motion to put all 10 items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And the agenda is set, back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Tim Kelly. Next, there is Finance, Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss, Alderman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Alderwoman Lynch and I have six items on the finance agenda. Item number one, first consideration, ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of $28,385,000 General Obligation Corporate Bond Series 2025 and for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on, but we will ask that it be set on the discussion agenda so that at the city council meeting, we can suspend the rules to issue the passage of the second and third consideration. Item number two, the resolution setting a public hearing on the FY 2026 operating budget, FY 2026 capital improvement budget, and the FY 2026 through FY 2031 capital improvement program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, just to make council aware that this will come up later on the agenda so that it can be voted on. Item number three, resolution setting a public hearing on amending the FY 2025 operating and capital improvement budget. Anyone from the public? Is there anyone from council? Seeing no one, item number three would move on. Item number four, resolution approving the allocation of remaining American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA, interest monies. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, order or address.
Good evening, my name is Laura Kopp, I'm the president and CEO of KSI. I live at 702 North Meadows Court, however, I am representing KSI, which is at 1035 West Kimberly Avenue. I ask you to bear with me as I share a relatively recent story that was brought to my attention. In December of 2022, Gordon and Roberta, his wife, woke up on another frigidly cold day in their van, which was parked in the KSI parking lot. They had been living in their van with their dog for several months. Their home was foreclosed on after COVID and some of the benefits that came along with the rescue plan and other COVID funding were eliminated, and they were too proud to ask their children for help. So they did what many older Americans do, and they hid their suffering and shouldered the burden of homelessness, starvation, and medical instability on their own the best that they could. Like every other morning, Gordon and Roberta started their day getting a big gulpful of ice, not for soda, not for food, not for anything else except to keep Roberta's medication refrigerated, because that's the only way that it would be effective. With the help of the KSI Senior Advocacy Program, we were able to put Gordon and Roberta up in a hotel for two weeks while we found them permanent housing. We also assisted them in accessing financial assistance and helped cover their first and last month's rent in their new apartment. I fear where this couple would be without these services and supports, and this story is one of just many that we hear every single day at KSI. For more than 50 years, KSI and the City of Davenport have worked together to strengthen our community and build services for seniors. From the development of the first affordable senior housing units in downtown Davenport, which still exist today, almost 50 years later, to the development of the Riverbend Transit System, which was the first affordable transportation system for older adults and those with disabilities. This decades-long collaboration has been serving those in need for over five decades. While many know us for our fitness center and our thousands of fun wellness activities, KSI is more than an activity center. We are more than bingo, we are more than zumba, and we are more than line dancing. We are a resource and a safety net in times of crisis. In 2021, at the height of the COVID pandemic and the rolling out of the first vaccines, KSI alone helped more than 4,000 seniors get vaccinated because they were not skilled enough to get online, which was the only way to do that at the beginning of the pandemic. Despite being closed for an entire year due to the risk that this disease posed to seniors, we were able to help our community in getting the most vulnerable vaccinated. In April of 2023, KSI opened its doors to serve as an emergency shelter for those impacted by the flooding in downtown Davenport. In May of that same year, following the collapse of the building in downtown Davenport, KSI once again offered our 40,000 square foot facility as an emergency shelter in partnership with the Red Cross. We were not paid for this, we were not offered compensation for this, we did not request compensation for this because we felt this was our duty and we felt that this was our responsibility to help those in need in our community. Our senior advocates assisted those in need, helping them to secure clothing, food, and financial assistance as they navigated all of these crises. The needs of seniors in Davenport will only continue to grow as we see the aging baby boomer and Gen X populations. I, myself, am 52 years old, and at the beginning of this meeting, I looked around and saw two-thirds of the people in this audience, those that are sharing their concerns and sharing their voices with us here tonight, are definitely over the age of 50, if not over the age of 60. In fact, looking at our own council, I see that many of us are over the age of 50. So these are our peers, these are our families, these are our friends in the community that we're talking about. In Scott County alone, there's been a 40% increase in the 65 and older population over just the last 10 years. 40% is astronomical, and it is a result of that silver tsunami of baby boomers that are aging every single day and landing on our doorstep. Sadly, in just the last two years, KSI has lost more than $450,000 in grants and program support. Everyone knows that we were cut from the county budget to the tune of $214,000 ongoing in perpetude. And that grant money supported our advocacy and our Janes Place Adult Day Services Program for over 30 years.
I'm sorry, time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this matter?
Hi, I'm Stacy Kaiser, I'm the Executive Director of Development for Beer French Housing, and I just wanted to thank you for your consideration. Hopefully, I'm speaking on the correct number, hopefully, I'm on the correct number four. I want to just thank you for your consideration for the ARPA interest. If you're familiar with Beer French and Beer French Housing, we have been just a wonderful partner here in Davenport and in Bettendorf for over 30 years, providing affordable, supported housing. And so I just want to thank you, if you haven't seen the development that's just right up the street on Harrison, that is the building that we're in the midst of building. When we started construction, there were some very unforeseen challenges that we had to undertake. And so we have been, thankfully, with the help of city staff and as great working partners, we were able to obtain some ARPA dollars. But that is just a very small portion as this site challenges are to the tune of over $800,000 that were not budgeted for. So we're very thankful for your consideration. We want to continue to be a great partner in Davenport to provide supportive, affordable housing for everyone and to help the city with homelessness. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone from council? Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to speak out on behalf of KSI. I've said this before, as we've talked about the interest money and what we're going to do with it, but KSI is one of the organizations that has been hit the hardest by the pandemic and then trying to recover from the pandemic. They've had some very difficult funding challenges, and at one point, we did have them funded in this interest money. And, you know, I respect all of the nonprofits that we have in here, and I'm certainly, they're all doing very good work, and I'm certainly not suggesting we need to take money from one to give to the other, but I would just ask if they're, to keep this on discussion, and if there's any consideration to consider bringing KSI back in at some level compared to what they had earlier, and if there's not... And if there's not, I respect the will of the council. I did want to ask City Administrator Max Siner, on the spreadsheet that we have in the notes, it says total proposed allocation, $3.2 million, and interest available, $3.2 million, and then no remaining balance. But the way I'm reading that is the remaining balance would actually be $1,075,877. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jocelyn.
Thanks, Chair. Just want to share that I agree with Alderman Gripp. So just putting that out there.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
I would also add my agreement to looking at something that we might be able to do with KSI. Thank you.
Anyone else from council?
Seeing no one else from council on this item, I would also add, I could fully support the matter going on the discussion agenda to allow council more time and to get more questions answered. I did receive, and I believe others on council received correspondence from KSI regarding funding. I think initially, it wasn't clear that the correspondence had was also in relation to the ARPA interest money. But it's, and we did receive follow-up from our staff regarding how, like, the historical context of funding and where we're at. I do think it's important to put it on discussion to see what can be done to ensure that we are still supportive of that in light of all situations. So I would ask that that one also goes on the discussion agenda. Moving on to item number five, resolution approving nine 2025 Open Prairie Forest Cover Property Tax Exemptions. Anyone from the public wishing to address this matter? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, item five moves on. And last but not least, item number six, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Downtown Davenport Partnership, City of Davenport, and City of Rock Island to allow for the continuation of an effective event model for red, white, and boom through a collaborative policy, programming, and funding approach. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, item six moves on. And with that, I would request that Alderwoman Lynch please set the agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to place items one and four on the discussion agenda and place items two, three, five, and six on the consent agenda.
Your motion in a second. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that, our agenda is set. I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch. Next area is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions? We have one. Is there, first, a motion for suspension of the rules to vote on the listed item?
So moved.
Motion is second. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for suspension, knowing we need eight.
I'm so sorry. Who moved in second? Move in second. Thank you so much. Lynch?
Yes.
Burke Holder?
Yes.
Reinhardt?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
R Dunn?
Yes.
T Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jopgin?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
And yes, as your honor.
Very good. The rules are suspended. So the resolution is setting a public hearing on the FY 2026 Operating Budget, FY 2026 Capital Improvement Budget, and the FY 26 to FY 2031 Capital Improvement Program. Is there any public with comment? Will the other person please move the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion from all their folks? Brian, please call the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
T Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jopgin?
Yes.
R Dunn?
Yes.
Reinhardt?
Yes.
Burke Holder?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
And Lynch?
Yes.
And yes, as your honor.
Very good. The resolution is adopted. Next area, is there any public of business other than what was discussed on the agenda? Please come to the podium, name, order, address. You'll have to know where you're from if you're not from here. You have three minutes, please. Thank you.
Sheriff Shagnin, Third Ward. I wanted to not assume that communication between the interim CA and the current CA was conveyed regarding the green space at 324 Main. And as we roll into race season with the BICs and things like that, we had some issues last year with people parking on that green space. And we want to make sure that that area is protected so people from town and also from out of town don't think that's just a convenient spot for them to park because it isn't. Three people actively died there under the rubble. And so that isn't a space to fool around with. And since when the Quad City, the issue with the chamber, and there was a request for a meeting before it hit the agenda, and that didn't happen, I can't assume that the communication between the interim and the current CA happened. So I need you guys to make sure that that happens and that nobody is parking where 324 Main Street building stood and three people died. I also want to, since we had the art in City Hall last week, and we had the kids, and it was a wonderful experience for the kids, but most of us can't get to City Hall's third floor and see it. I have to rely on the pictures that the city's posts. And I want to say it's called City Hall for a reason. It's because it belongs to all of us, not just city staff. I've been inside City Hall in Moline a couple months ago. I was able to access the upper floors without an issue, and I don't even live in Moline. I also want to address the Code of Conduct Committee, and now I can see why certain people decided after the work was done, they wanted to be on the committee. It's like having a wolf watch the hen house, and I've got some real issues with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Kami Po. I live in Davenport, 1216 North Concord Street, and I am the owner of Mississippi Spoon Gallery. I'm coming here, I'm sorry, all the doom and gloom that is behind me. I feel guilty, but I would ask for you guys' support as I go for the Guinness Book of World Record. I do have a letter for each one of you here, and you can consider yourself to be part of the team. I would love it. I need at least three officials to sign off on it, and one of them has to be attorney, and one of them has to be elected official. I do believe I have Rick Dunn, but I don't know if I have any other person that could be able to attend the event. If we get enough volunteers, which I imagine we will, we should be done within the hour. I promise not to take 17 hours like the guy that got the pencil record in Iowa of 69,000 pencils, came to visit my museum. So I want to let you know, my museum not only has been helpful for the community, but how many times I've had people come off I-80 Bridge and tell me, hey, we wanted something to do off this, and we saw your museum. They're stopping here, asking me where they can go and get something to eat. Me being from Davenport, me knowing all of the area, and being a tour guide, I'm very useful for our businesses downtown Davenport. So I would appreciate your support in the Mississippi Spoon Gallery and its endeavor. It is a very unique opportunity for Davenport to have. These are not just your grandma's spoons. These are spoons that tell stories. I have George Washington spoons that are over 120 years old. I have European stories that are painted in pictures of bulls. I have traveled the world to get these spoons. I've been fortunate to travel on somebody else's dollars so I can afford these spoons. But I want to give this letter to you and hope that you guys consider coming that day, spend a couple hours, and I hope to get some pizza and some refreshments, and hopefully some badges for the people that attend that day because I know I will get that record. I'm already, my count is already over 30,000. I'm pretty sure I'm over 31,000 right now. The count, I was trying to beat the count before in 2023, but the Guinness Book of World Record would not separate these souvenir spoons from a gentleman that had 30,000 teaspoons. So needless to say, I have teaspoons I can count. And I didn't know, that was an option for me. Otherwise, I would have broke that record, and you guys would have been bidding for my museum at that time. Now I have it, and I have a museum here in Davenport. I would appreciate your guys' support. Just got interviewed by the Wall Street Journal today. That's how big this is.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to give this to the city clerk and read it, and if you guys can help out, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yeah, Paul Vasquez, Third Ward, City of Davenport. First off, I do want to thank a couple of women for bringing back the issue of broadcasting the entire meeting. I think that's paramount. I really do. I got stopped last week because I exceeded the three-minute time limit. I didn't like that. And that lady was talking a very important subject. You stopped her. I don't like that.